So we're going to celebrate Christmas by getting through this meeting as quickly as possible. I'm going to need a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and second, and all those in favor. Okay, is there anyone on the board who has anything that they'd like to add this evening?
I'd like to apologize for not attending the PR meeting this month. Just was not, circumstances would not allow me to be there.
Apology accepted. Anyone else? Okay, communications. Denise McMullin? Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm not a public speaker, but here we go.
You are now.
Yeah, great. Three things, real quick. I have two children actually, in Roosevelt Elementary, and they both have irretractable epilepsy. One of them, Kaylee, is in the sped class, full-time. And I just wanted to let you know that her teachers, Laura Cox, Ashley Sabarn, and Vicki Boatright, I wanted to come before you guys, I really want a special ceremony for them. They have proved my neurologist wrong. They told me that Kaylee would never talk, and if she did, she would just be mocking what you said. They have her reading, okay, that's awesome. And I really want this to be, I mean, these teachers did this. So, the second thing is, I have a problem with, and I'm sorry, bus duty. I'm having a big problem with bus duty. Vicki gets there at 7:15 in the morning. The other teachers don't get there till 7:40, okay? When I bring Kaylee into class, there's already kids in class, and they have to run down to the, you know, they beep them or whatever, they have to run down, open the door, you know, let the other kids in, the special needs kids. She has to take the kids with her. So I've stood in the class many times, and I am CPR certified, but I've stood in that class many times while she has run down to get other kids. Okay, get the kids in the class, they are on, and Kaylee's probably the highest of them there. These kids bite, kick, punch, scratch, poop, puke, you name it, they do it to these teachers every single day. I've witnessed it, it's horrible. But when those kids come in that classroom, they have a smile on their face, and I mean, they're just like excited and overjoyed to see them. So, the bus duty thing, when they have bus duty, the teacher comes in early to do the bus duty, you still have one teacher in the classroom. You have three or four other kids in the classroom screaming, carrying on, and the teacher still has to run down to get, you know, let someone else in the door. I have a problem with that, you know, Kaylee can have a seizure and heart, I mean, just like that. Three minutes, she could die. So, it's very important. And the bus duty thing, I'm so totally opposed against us. Because like I said, I've been there, I've stood in the classroom while they've ran down. So a teacher would be, someone would be in the classroom with the kids. The third thing is, I'm glad that came on. Their computers in their classroom are so old, really, I think they're the first ones ever built. They've been taken out, rebuilt, refixed, everything. They freeze up constantly during the Christmas program. The computer froze up. Kaylee, one of them, when they're doing computer stuff, and it's on the screen, you have six little kids that scream, kick, fight, they're constantly. If they're focused on something, and that computer freezes up, believe me, I've seen it. Kaylee does it at home, kicks, screams, slams her head on the wall. It's ridiculous. And I know, I asked Vicki about it, she said she got a new something or another, but the tower was still old. And the two computers they have in the room, they've been taken out, refixed, 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 and they still freeze up on the kids. And at that point, the two that are sitting at the computers scream, cry, throw fit. Now, I know everybody pays taxes, and I know how tight money is, but seriously, these are the oldest computers I've ever seen in my life. And that's pretty much it. I would like newer, if not new, computers. I mean, I got my taxes just the other day. I paid $1,407 just for school taxes. Totally fine, I'm all for it. But we need to upgrade the computers because they freeze up constantly. Second, the bus duty, ridiculous. I mean absolutely ridiculous. The other teachers don't get there till 7:40. If they have, if they don't have bus duty, they get there at 7:40. And if one does come in early for bus duty, she's doing bus duty. So the one teacher is stuck in that classroom with screaming kids. It's, so, and then the special ceremony. Not putting down any other teacher there, because I'm sure, and I know they're all wonderful, but these teachers, every day you walk in, they have a smile on their face, and they're ready to go. So, thank you. Oh! This would be Kaylee. And she's being good tonight, aren't you? So thank you very much for hearing me, and I really would like these things addressed. I mean, the awards is very important, but the computers and the bus duty, you know, I didn't notice it because Kaylee used to ride the bus, and she can't any longer. So then now I notice more when I'm in there every day. It's, you know, I see Vicki running kids down the hall to let people in, you know, and it's... We'll follow up. I know there are more teachers. They eat lunch with these kids, they take recess with these kids. Come on, baby, come on. So, thank you very much for your time. Totally would appreciate some help on the bus duty and the ceremony and computers.
Well, I've already drank out of it, and I have a cold, sweetheart.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a featured staff member.
We do. Andy, featured staff person?
Yes, yes. This is Mr. Andy White.
All right. For the tech department, our featured staff member of the month. She continually provides assistance to the teachers by exploring new technologies to use in the classroom. She has conducted training sessions to the high school staff on various technologies, including the Google apps. And she is definitely a promoter of the technology department's initiatives, and she continually assists and accommodates the staff when we are in need of help at the high school. And whenever I ask the technology staff who they think will be most deserving, it was an immediate response from Andy Sutherland.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, greatly appreciated.
Congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work.
In so many areas.
Oh, good. Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Very much.
Okay, Mr. Rubel, I think you have some special recognition.
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, Mrs. Barber is going to assist me with this. Actually, she's going to do it on the watch.
There you go.
Like usual.
Right!
She said she wanted it.
Um, I have been asked tonight to speak to you. Debbie is retiring. This is her last week at this high school. She has been in education for 25 years. 19 of it has been at Farmington. Six of it has been at North County. But we tell her on a daily basis that we forgive her for the North County.
Absolutely.
I've been thinking. Can you sum up a career like that in just a few brief moments? And I figured out that you can't sum it up, so I thought maybe I would just tell you about her last week of work. Um, this, not all, not all of it. Okay, thanks. Maybe, I guess, I could probably tell you about the tears that the little girl shed as she found out Ms. Abisham was leaving, and she has been stuck to her side all last semester. I could tell you about the custodian who cried because Debbie harasses her. I could tell you about this really mischievous young boy who gets in trouble daily, and when Debbie says, he says, "Yeah, neither." So we've got that one to contend with. But I think perhaps what really sums it all up is the card that Debbie got in the mail last week. And it had nothing to do with her retirement, she gets this card. And in this card is a picture of a young Marine. And this Marine says, "Dear Ms. Abisham, because of you, I graduated. I hope I make you proud." And I think that pretty much sums it up. And I just want to say, Debbie, because of you, many, many students loved history classes and loved social sciences. And because of you, many of those students are teachers now. And because of you, Debbie... And because of you, Debbie, many students graduated because you understand, I think, probably the most important thing in education, and that is that children, like adults, make mistakes, and they all deserve second chances. And as she was ranting and raving today, I had my pen out, and I said, "I'm going to cross off this part." And it is because of you, Debbie, that there has never been a dull moment. And I want to just say, please never forget us as you start your new adventure, and I hope we make you proud. You okay?
I'm okay, you okay?
We're good. I'm going to sit down, let you go.
As you know, pasta con broccoli. Yellow roses. I have a few words to say, you may take bathroom breaks if you need. It's my turn. I'm a little feigning, I just fell out. I just do want to say a couple of things, and I'm going to stick to this. I have to write in huge letters because my eyes are not what they used to be. But I wanted to tell you one of the things that, when I first started teaching, I was hired in North County. I was standing one day in front of a class of 7th graders and thought, "I have met my equals." Because they were so squirrely, I liked it. But I was in a serious moment, and I looked at this young man who's sitting here, and he just keeps looking me up and down, and up and down. I finally stopped and said, "Is there something wrong?" And he goes, "You're tall." I said, "Yes, I am," and he says, "Are you a cyclops?" And I said, "Do you mean Amazon?" And he goes, "Whatever." So that day, the teachers were walking around, and they cut out little eyes, and stuck them up their forehead. And I thought, "I'm in for the ride of my life." So this week, I'm going down the hall, and one of my, I call them free foot flyers, said, "I just got paid today." And I said, "You did? Are you going to buy me something?" And she goes, "No, they don't have a devil section at the mall." And I said, "Well played." So, that is the type of kid that I was drawn to, and maybe because I was that type of kid. I did graduate from North County, as I've told the kids, and I'm not working here any longer. I skipped school. Go ahead, say it. And I'm looking around thinking, "I bet there are some here who have as well." But I do have to thank some people. And one of the first people I would like to thank is Dave Waters. He hired me. Even more importantly, he kept me. Because some days, it was pretty interesting, and I know, probably, I think this is appropriate. One day we were seeing an administrator's meeting, and I was looking out the window, as usual. He's talking, and he's just, "Oh, I'm about to be in the halls, I'm going to do this." And all of a sudden, I saw a squirrel. So I announced, "I have the biggest acorns this year." The year we had acorns, that we were dodging, you'd get here and hit the deck, and they would just bounce. And Dave looked at me, and I looked at the rest of the administrators, who were just looking at me as well. And he says, "Oh, look, there goes a chicken." I was just kind of off somewhere else. We had laughed about that, because every time I would get off track, he'd go, "Look, there's a chicken." So, thank you so much, Dave, for keeping me. And I don't know if appreciating me, but accepting my little twist on education. I appreciate that. I also want to thank Ashley Kraus. Ashley Kraus was a teacher when I was there. And you would see this curly-haired girl with a beret on top of her head, zipping down one hallway, zipping down another hallway, and that was the year that you tucked your shirt into your pantyhose, I think. And I thought, "Boy, that's odd." Then I worked alongside her, and she is one of the kindest people you'll ever meet. And she has a, she doesn't like to have people say nice things about her. She's kind of like me, it's just, it's not a comfortable thing. But she is. She's very good at what she does. She's very good at anything she tries. And she's a good mom. And I've watched that through the years. That's one of the beautiful things, that being around forever. Another person I would like to thank is Jamie Lamont. I'm leaving, and you're now heart of the kids. Susan, I feel like we've known each other, talked together for, or been in the building together for, what, eight years? Working side by side. And I feel like I've known you forever, and your grace. When I'm bouncing off the walls, there's the calm. She's the grace. I tried to pick it up from her, it doesn't stand. But I tried. John Kraus is not here, John is one of the finest men I know. He is honorable. He is passionate about things that he feels very strongly about, and sticks to his guns. And I've been working with him, sharing an office actually, for a couple of years, and we've had interesting conversations as well. Burns is not here, so I'm going to talk, barely got him as I went. He's just out having more kids, I don't know, he has... Many, yet none. And he has, like, four. And I can't wait until his girls get to the high school, because he's young enough that he will still be around when I have them. So we're all waiting for that. Crystal Lilly's not here either. Crystal was my secretary for years and kept me in line. If she can keep after me, she can run core data for this district and the state. Because she is dynamite. She was a wonderful assistant. Matt. Thank you for appreciating me. And he told me all the time how much he appreciated me. Other than, "Don't do that. Don't do that, I appreciate you." As I've gotten older, I have found myself quoting my father, W.L. Sanders, and the Beatles. I've gone through four superintendents here. First was Dr. Webb, who told me to develop a filter. The second one was Dave Crapp, who said, "Deb, be nice." And Dr. Sanders, who said, "You need to learn to control those facial expressions and don't play poker. Do everything you have, you do everything but fall on the floor." Dr. Thomas just looks at me sometimes, I'm not sure. Just a look. So, my dad, and I have told parents this so many times, when the dust settles, it'll be okay. That was one of my favorites, my dad's. He'd always say, "Oh, the dust is running around your kids. Now wait till it settles, and everything's going to be okay." I tell that to a lot of parents, not all of them. I'm not sure any dust could settle, but you never give up. I'm leaving my family, NFHS, and I'm able to do that because of Matt, and Susan, and Jamie, and John, and all the wonderful teachers that have, and could have become my family. We've watched births, deaths, graduations, fights, make up. We're a family. We're dysfunctional, but we're a family, as every family is in some way. I love them all. No, that's not true, I don't love them all, but I love most of them, and the kids. And knowing that they are in good hands, I'm leaving you to do what I need to do, which is take care of my family, because I've fallen in love with Genevieve Rose, my first granddaughter, grandchild. And she is my heart. Okay, I've quoted my dad, I've quoted W.L. Sanders, when he has told me to not play poker. And one of my favorite things to tell the kids is, sometimes when they come in and they're all upset, I said, "Just let it be, just let it be." Did you see my plaque? Let it be. So, I'm telling all of you, I will miss you. I have loved telling people when they ask what I am, even when I was the director of AT-Risk and administrator, and I say, "I'm an educator, I'm a teacher." And I have been so proud to do that. And I'm going on to a new adventure, which will also, I hope, help a lot of kids out of education. And I know my husband is just so excited to have me home. Someone said the other day, "I've never met your husband, but I just feel like he needs hugs." I said, "Whatever." So, I will be back around to harass. It's going to be quieter in the high school, I guarantee that. But, thank you. Thank you all for making me feel like this is my family, and I ask you to take care of my family when I'm gone, because I'll come back and check on you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You know everything else is going to be downhill from here, don't you? Everything else is anticlimactic. Good luck in your retirement and with your husband. Good luck, Ron. Student voices, do we have any key club members, anybody from the high school? Oh, okay, guys, come on up. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi there.
That's a hard act to follow.
Anybody, just talk to any of us, that'll be fine.
Well, we are from the Farmington High School Key Club. I'm Taylor Brockmiller, I am the president.
I'm Maddie McMillan, I'm vice president.
First of all, I just want to thank you guys so much for supporting us. We've been able to help a lot of people, thanks to the support from you guys and from Mr. Todd Verhalla, who's not been able to be here, but him, Craig Sutherland, and Pat King have been amazing. So Maddie's going to tell you a little bit about what we've done in the past, and then we'll talk about what's going on now.
We actually rechartered the club our sophomore year, and we've kind of been in a leadership position since then, and it's been fun. We do several monthly things. Every month, we go over to the food pantry and gather up food items and take them to Benor Apartments, because they're not able to get out, and we give them food. We do, we volunteer at Presbyterian Manor a lot, at least once a month, whether it's scrapbooking, or bingo, or whatever, just time to spend some time with the residents there. We help with the custodians. We have painted several hallways, a room. We've cleaned trophy cases, we've picked weeds, you name it. Just whatever we can do to get involved in our school and in our community.
All right, so as Maddie said, we really done a lot, and we are continuing that through the Christmas season. So, right now, we have a lot going on. We are painting for the middle school, and Mr. Rubel, who were back there...
Volunteered us.
Volunteered us for that. But in return, he gave us some money so we could get a family from Seasons of Hope, and we can buy them stuff for Christmas, whenever they would otherwise not be able to have a very good Christmas whatsoever. So we really appreciate that, even if we do have to paint a whole gym. There's our Christmas family. We also started tradition last year. We make Christmas cards, and then bring them over to the residents of Presbyterian Manor, as Maddie said. We've kind of made friends with the residents over there. They're a lot of fun to go visit, they always have fun stories. So we make Christmas cards, and we go over there and deliver them. And last year, they decided to do a good idea to Christmas carol as well. So we decided to...
Sing Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer about half a million times.
The only one we all knew. So we kept it in, but that's a lot of fun. We really have just done a lot, and it's so much fun to get to interact with people and see what people are up to, and be able to help people in situations that they don't really have much control over. So thank you guys very much for supporting us and helping us help others. Thank you very much.
Before they finished, I am Craig Sutherland, and I'm here as the capacity of the president of the Farmington Kiwanis Club, which is a civic organization that actually sponsors the Key Club. As you could tell, you have two outstanding leaders here. And really, as a Kiwanis organization, we appreciate the board and all the schools' support of having the Key Club here in Farmington. Maddie kind of sold herself a little bit short. She's not only vice president of our local organization, she's also lieutenant governor of our district, which helps oversee leadership of numerous other Key Club organizations, and done an outstanding job. Not only are these two people good examples of leadership, there's over 30 other high school students that participate in the Key Club. Key Club has been reestablished over the last two years, and is well-known statewide and area-wide of these young people's leadership role. And again, I thank the board of allowing that. I'd also like to extend my thank you to Mr. Matt Rubel and Mr. Todd Verhalla. Because of their mentoring and their leadership, Key Club would not be near what it would be today. And they are true examples of a positive impact. And to me, as an adult, on the latter side of my professional side of it, especially in today's times, when we hear every day the difficulties, it's so encouraging to see young people like we have here, Taylor, Maddie, and the 30-some-odd additional people, who are stepping up and not only taking a leadership role, but reinvesting in the community, and doing it the right thing. And believe me, these guys are doing it on their own. They're awesome. They're taking the true accountability and responsibility and leadership of their actions, and could not be prouder of them. So, thank you, ladies.
Okay, Stacy?
Yeah. Is it Stacy?
Stacy had an issue. There's a car parked in the way of the gates. It's a Maroon Lincoln, and the bus is parked.
Hey, the driver of the Maroon Lincoln, license number. Oh, of course you do.
AE1T6CU.
Is it still out there?
How many Maroon Lincolns can there be? I mean, really. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, all right. Anybody from CTA? Mr. Fair.
So I have some information about the backpack program that I'll share with you on behalf of the CTA officers. We want to thank all the businesses, teachers, staff, churches, individuals, and the kids who helped raise funds and food for... who helped raise funds and food for the CTA nighttime snack, which is what we're calling it now, program this holiday season. Thanks to all the help from everyone, including parents, Carrie Hand and Melissa Pritchett, who worked tirelessly raising funds and food, along with Meadow Heights, who brought packs and helped us deliver backpacks. We will be able to continue the program throughout the year because of all these people's help. Yesterday, we delivered 135 backpacks to be distributed by each building in the Farmington R7 district. And we asked the community for their continued support throughout the year, because hunger never ends. So, thanks for making this a successful year, and we're excited about continuing it beyond Christmas.
Thank you so much.
And we had a corporate sponsor. Brenda, can you give us the name of the corporate sponsor?
It's SRG Global.
Who presented us with a significant check that's really going to help. Did not want any significant amount of advertisement, but those funds are really going to go a long way to helping the program, and it's really nice to have that corporate sponsorship as well, so.
Okay, thank you so much. Hey, I think we had letters. Everybody got a chance to see those. Dr. Thomas?
Yes, I would just like to take a minute to thank the staff and the entire community for the support for us for this week. Obviously, when something happens to a school district and an elementary school, it impacts all of us. I think it's real important to know that our attendance was fully, was full. We did not have any reduction in either staff or student attendance, and I think that really demonstrates the community's support of the school district and confidence in the school district. And it takes courage for people to come forward at stressful times, but we could not ask for better leadership from our administrative team, our teaching team, our administrators, our staff. There hasn't been one group that has not reached out. Our bus drivers have been phenomenal. Today, I received a poem from a food service person who thought it might be useful for us. Our custodians have been extremely vigilant and out. Our school resource officers, there's just no place in the district that people have not stepped forward and just done a tremendous job of supporting our community. And so, I wanted to commend everyone and make sure the board, I know that you know it, but that you realize what a phenomenal group of people that you have committed with the district. And then also to thank the Education Foundation, the funds have been delivered for the many grants, and significant numbers of teachers were able to get funds. It was partnered with CTA. Those monies have been distributed, have been given to Don, and teachers have been notified. So, I think there's over 40 projects that are going on this year because of those many grants. We wanted to make sure to know about that. Great partnership with CTA.
That's it?
Okay. All right, moving down to the informational items, we have the trio of Longhatch and Amston to discuss Core Standards and MCP update.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sharing with each of you a packet. As you recall, last month, we talked about kind of going old-school. We're still using paper and pencil for these prompts, and you had expressed the interest that you'd like to see a little bit more about the English Language Arts rather than math first, so we're going to start with the English Language Arts tonight. As we've been talking about changes in education and the fact that 2015 will be the start for a new testing cycle for our students and new standards that our teachers are already beginning to study, that's going to be one of the focuses of our in-service on January the 7th. When we come back, we'll have teachers actually looking at assessment documents. So, in front of you, the very first piece of paper you have is just a reminder of what our district timeline is. As we begin to move toward those live assessments in 2015, we are working backwards from that date and being sure that everyone's on board and kind of knows what to expect. The second item you will see is, it says, "Six shifts in ELA literacy." These are really the biggest changes that are happening across the nation and compared to what our students are currently expected to do with the MAP assessment and our current grade level expectations. I'll point out about three of these that are really driving what the changes are. The first is that increase in informational text. We used to call that nonfiction. For those of us who are a little older than 20, it was called nonfiction. Now, it's called informational text, and there's really a stress on students being able to read and delve deeply into what informational text means. And if you think about what each of you does in your job right now, you aren't asked to read a piece of fiction and then reflect back on it. You really read manuals. You read a lot of information-giving pieces of text, and they may be just a picture in the caption underneath, but you have to be able to read that, what we now call close reading. And that's what we're moving toward with our students. By the time a student hits the senior high school, it is anticipated that 70% of what they should be reading should be informational text. Now, that's across all their coursework, not just in English Language Arts. But if you consider science and social studies, and they may be in a technical field throughout their whole day, about 70% of what they're interacting with, as far as what they're reading and writing about, should be informational text. So, that's a shift from what we've been doing in the past. The next one I will point out is called text-based answers. Again, that's that focus that kids aren't asked to give a narrative about what they did over their Christmas vacation. They really need to be able to go back into that informational text and pull out those big ideas, and then maybe compare those or analyze those. These are higher-order thinking skills, and that's what we're seeing in English Language Arts. So, even on tests where they say it's a constructed response, really, that test is asking for specific information that came out of what they were going to read. We've already seen one sample of the fourth-grade test, and one of the items was actually to read four different pieces of informational text, and then to write an opinion piece about which of those had the most impact on that student. It was about different regions of the country, which one would they like to live in, and give text-based answers within their response. So, it's writing basically an opinion essay, but it would be based on what they just read. That also points out, and it's not on the shifts page, but it's what we've been talking with the board about for the past few months, is the fact that technology plays such a piece in this. These tests will actually be online, and that fourth-grade test, those students are expected to be able to sit down and write what we used to call an essay in one setting using a computer. So, that's why we're looking at keyboarding going down to lower levels. That's why we're looking at that accessibility for students to be able to use technology on an ongoing basis. These tests are going to be very driven by technology-based options for how the student will use the testing materials. And again, if you think about your world of work, we all use technology in our workplace now, and it's going to only increase as we go on through. And then the last thing I want to point out is shift number three, which is called text complexity. That just means that what we're expecting children to read is a little more difficult than what we used to be considering grade level. They are really going to be reading with increased rigor, not only informational text, but just the difficulty, the vocabulary. It's just a little bit harder than it was with the grade level expectations under Missouri standards. So, if you're thinking about it, they're going to read closely, they're going to read a lot of informational texts, and then they're going to have to be able to use that information that they're reading to read and write about and to answer and respond with. The next thing that you will find in your packet is simply the focus areas. This is just for you to, when you have insomnia some night, to read through. It's K5 on one page with the reading focuses. On the back is 612, and then the second page is the writing focuses, just to give you a little bit more information. And then to make this exciting, it's not really a game show. We won't ask you to respond with the answers, but Robyn and Kim are going to actually take you through two sample assessment items that you would see. And that's with the last page, next to the last page, and one assessment item is on the front of that page, and the second assessment item is on the backside of that same piece of paper. So, I'll turn it over to the gurus on assessment.
All right. So, it's Christmas time, so here's your present. You get to take a couple of writing, or reading prompts. The last page of your packet actually has the reading standards for informational text, and the, both of these prompts tie back to this particular standard, which is read closely to determine what the text says explicitly and make logical inferences from it. They also, it goes on to cite specific textual evidence when writing or speaking to support conclusions. So, that's the overall standard that both of these items go back to. One of these items is a fourth-grade item, and one of these items is a sixth-grade item. Both of them are samples from Smarter Balance. I'd like you to take a second and look at the one that says, "What is a satellite?" So, this is a piece of informational text. The kids would have to read this piece and then respond in writing to the prompt below. Now, in writing, obviously, everything will be on computer, so it's all online. I want you to take just a second, kind of skim through that, and look at that writing It's kind of an in-depth piece of reading. If you notice, it has, it has five different parts. It has an introductory, it has four supporting paragraphs, and then in the item is actually asking them to explain how the pictures that come from satellites can help people in their everyday lives, but it's not just what they think. They actually have to go back up into the passage and find information to support their conclusion, their inference. On the back, it's more, it's a section, a little piece on orbits on satellites. Again, this particular piece is on, it's basically a geostationary satellite, more like, kind of like a weather satellite or mapping satellites, kind of like the one that Google uses. So, take a second, look at that prompt and the item that follows it. If you had to guess, which one is fourth and which one is sixth? Any guesses?
I find this tricky.
I would never do anything tricky.
Well, it seems like the "What is a satellite?" might be, there's a lot more information involved here.
It's longer, but it's actually the fourth grade, and it's because the vocabulary is more complex in the shorter piece. Okay? That lends itself to that discussion of text complexity. So, it's not just about the length, it's about what's in it. It's the vocabulary that's involved. It's the, how deep they have to go for the inference. So, one of the things that Kim and I are doing is we've both kind of developed our methods of working with this new material. Kim's strength seems to be in helping teachers develop how to attack the standards in mind. It tends to be towards the assessment side, and so we're working together, using our strengths on those particular pieces. Maybe restructuring a little bit how we work, just so that we're not.
With different grade levels.
Right. So, that we're not really trying to reduplicate our efforts. But I wanted you to kind of get a sense of what this looks like, and next month, maybe we can look at some math. Yeah? I find the math a little bit more cut and dry than the COMARTs. And I've been doing the Smarter Balance item review, which has been an eye-opening experience for me and a lot of late nights. So, thank you very much, and if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
I got one question. Every kid's going to have a computer that they're going to print. Is that the plan?
Every kid will take the test online. They don't print it. It goes, it downloads onto their computer, they take the test, press submit, and it uploads to the server. It's, you know, we've been giving the high school end-of-course exams online for, was this year three now? This is our third year?
Four. We had one test.
Yeah.
Back in 2008. It was online.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're seeing how it works at the high school. We were really nervous about it, but let me tell you, the kids are, they're fine with it. I mean, they just sat down. We give them a little practice on what the tools look like, the testing tools, because they can highlight in COMARTs, in math, they use rulers, and they have graphing tools and things like that. So, we're going to have to get them comfortable with that. We're working with Ron to figure out a way to shift our pre-present and post-test that we give our kids, how to shift those into an online format instead of using paper pencil tests, so that kids begin to get more comfortable with that. Again, we're going to need more computers in order to make that happen and the wireless access.
Currently, at grades K through six, we have the iReady program, and that is all an online diagnostic test that kids take in a very similar way. It's very adaptive, it's an adaptive-type test, just like the, or similar to what the Smarter Balance test will be. Same kinds of things in both ELA and math that we think that will be on the Smarter Balance test. So, just as a way for those kids, kindergarten, first thing, they're already being exposed to that kind of stuff right now. And then it also has an instructional piece that some kids have available to them as well.
All right.
We're working hard on getting them ready.
Any more questions?
We thank you. We can't wait for math.
Okay, Mr. Farrell, instructional technology update.
First, it's been an amazing experience working with instructional technology just so far this year, and it's been great to see the overwhelming response from teachers. We're excited to use the resource. I've had almost 400 requests for assistance in the four months since we've started, so it's fantastic to hear teachers asking questions and sharing ideas. As we move forward with Common Core and the technology piece, it's important that we move forward with instructional technology. And one of the things that we've been doing is trying to push some of the existing technology that we already have in the district, because we actually have some great technology that maybe isn't being used quite as much because they haven't had that one-on-one training resource that we now have. One of that, or one of those pieces has been clickers. We've had these clickers and mobies for a while, and I think teachers were befuddled on how to use them in their classroom. And we've really started using them in some unique ways, especially at the middle and intermediate and elementary levels. They're using these for all of their spelling tests now. It's an engaging way to have students sit down. It's not an oral response or written response. They love using the clickers. They love seeing their answers show up on the board. But more importantly, it grades all of the answers for the teacher and allows them to chart the progress of the students. So, all of that is done automatically. It's way more efficient for the teacher, and it's technology that we already have in the district. So, teachers are loving, learning how to use this, and they're loving to see how it's helping them, you know, make their life a lot easier. Something else that we're doing, and I'm changing on the fly here because they did English Language Arts, and I had a math app to show you, but I wanted to correlate with what they were talking about. One of the things that we're pushing for our tablet devices, because we are getting more and more tablet devices in the district, is the use of apps. And we want to make sure that our apps are more than just games, but actual instructional tools. And the app makers are doing a fantastic job at developing apps that fit right along with Common Core standards, but also fit with the way students will be testing and the kind of information that they need to pull. So, here's an app where they'll read a passage of informational literacy, that nonfiction text. I love how it has graphics on each, and then it assesses them in three different ways. So, it can ask them comprehension questions on what they just read. It can ask them true or false comprehension questions, or it even has vocabulary by unscrambling the words. So, it's engaging, it's very tactile with the way that the students interact with the device, and it's teaching them those same skills that they're going to need for Common Core and the same kind of testing devices that they'll be using on the online testing. So, we're excited, and we're excited to move forward with technology.
And every month, we're going to have a little additional demonstration, so if there's anything you want to follow up with or any questions that you have or something you're specifically interested in seeing, we're going to have a little commercial every month, so please let us know the topics that you want us to address.
Down to discussion items, and I see that Mr. Hart is here, untangled from traffic. Thank you so much for coming. No, we appreciate the fact that you made the effort to come. So, I'm sure that if you'll entertain any questions that the board has, or you have anything that you'd like to say to us? Besides Merry Christmas?
Of course, Merry Christmas. I'm prepared to answer questions on the resolution, and I would just want to, I'm looking over the one I have here, four-year adoption for the refunding that will refund the Series 2008 bonds. And there's a section in there where it says, "The board has designated them as bank-qualified," and I wanted to say deems them to be designated as bank-qualified. That, I had that in my correction to the law firm, but it didn't come out in what's printed here, so that would be just one clarification that I would want to make when you consider that resolution.
We wondered why that was.
And then, are you talking about both of them at the same time, or do you want to, you have them as separate items?
Separate items.
So, this first one, the savings, is slightly more than we talked before. We have participation of local. We have a participation of local banks of $1,750,000 up to $4,225,000, which is a little over 41%. Very strong participation and that helped us keep these rates low, .4% and .5% are the rates on, one's doing 14 and then 15. So, it's, the average rate is .47%. So, it's very, very well supported by the local community.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, and would you like to speak to the other? If there aren't any questions or comments from the board?
On the other one?
Yes, please.
Yes, this, the other one is for $4,500,000 and it is advanced refunding the Series 2006 bonds, which are callable on March 1, 2016. And that particular resolution creates a final terms committee, which would be the board president, the superintendent, myself, and the business manager for, to set the rates. We need to wait about 15 days from tonight to set them so that the escrow will earn as much as it legally, as much as it can. And then that would avoid having a separate board meeting for that particular matter. I know we've talked about them three or four times. So, we'd just be following that plan with those individuals and myself locking in the rates probably about, towards the very end of the year.
Any questions? Good.
Both of them reduce your maturity over what you presently have by two full years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I think we're ready to go to action.
Consensual items, everything but B.
Yeah, we have to, we're going, I'd like a motion to approve all the consensual items, but we need to pull B. And I need a motion and a second.
Make the motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, no opposition. And then I need a motion to approve payment of the regular bills without signs, et cetera.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. And we have a extension. No, we have to, now we have to vote on signs, et cetera. So, I need a motion to do that in a second.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Without Mr. Harrington? Okay, good to go.
And one abstention.
And one abstention. Okay, and I believe that we're ready for a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Adjourn to closed session, discuss... Yes. Sorry.
A little brain freeze there.
Yeah. Adjourn to closed session, discuss personnel pursuant to 610021, paragraph 1, 3, and 13.
Okay, so I need a second to put into that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded and that will be a roll call vote.
Hunt.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Wathlesberger.
Yes.
Okay.